Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order February 28th, 2022. Mrs. Gober, could we have roll call, please? Mr. Allozy?
Here.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Here.
Dr. Donaher?
Here.
Mr. Nyman? Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Here.
Dr. Shively?
Here.
Dr. White?
Here.
Mr. Faschino? There are seven members present. Thank you. If you could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. This evening, Dr. Roy, do we have any recognition? Thank you very much. At this time, we have courtesy of the floor for agenda items only. There will be an additional courtesy of the floor at the end of the meeting for any topics. Seeing none, this evening, we have our reports from the student representatives. Excuse me, Freedom's up first. Ms. Floria?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Roy, members and members of the school board and all of those in attendance tonight. While the months have been passing by quickly, students continue to work hard in school and enjoy their second semester classes. This past weekend, the FHS wrestling team finished seventh out of 21 in the District 11 Class 3A Tournament, and four team members have the opportunity and advance to next week's Northeast Regional Tournament. We wish them the best of luck. As we end February and approach March, we see the start of our spring sports, track and field, boys volleyball, boys tennis, baseball, softball, and boys and girls lacrosse. They have all been working hard in their preseason for weeks, and the ride squad along with the rest of our school look forward to seeing them out on the court or field. Speaking of spring sports, the baseball team held the Cash Bingo this past Sunday to start off their season and had a great turnout. Once again, the students in Mrs. Gilmartin's AP US Government and Politics class will hold their voter registration drive at all lunches to raise awareness about how important it is for our students turning 18 to start using their voices and to realize the effect they can have on our political advocacy. Also occurring at lunches, the new FHS Combating Crohn's and Colitis Club will be selling bracelets to fundraise and spread word of the club. They also have plans of meeting with coordinators at St. Luke's to plan an event for the end of the year. The National Honor Society held their second blood drive of the year, and with the tremendous help from their officers and student volunteers, they were able to have much success. Last week, Freedom held their spring semester open house, presenting parents and/or guardians the opportunity to meet their child's teachers and see their hard work in the classroom. They enjoyed deliciously prepared treats from the Go Tech students and were able to learn about the amazing clubs at Freedom while being able to pay their child's class dues. In our gym on March 9th, we will be having a career fair. Here, all the students will have a chance to visit the different supporting companies in our community during one of their classes throughout the day. This is a great opportunity for not only our upperclassmen to get more information about their possible career paths, but also for our underclassmen to gain interest in different future careers and to recognize what steps they may need to take for their possible career in mind. Last Thursday, counselors stopped by AP courses and helped students with their AP registration and scholarship forms for the upcoming exams in May. Lastly, onto our fine arts. This past Sunday, the FHS Jazz Band performed at the Arts Quest Center where they took home the award for Best Saxophone Section, and Senior Gianna Dowling won the Best Vocalist Award. Tonight, the FHS Choir will hold their Choir Coffee House show and will feature the Jazz Band and choir ensembles as well as some student-featured duets and solos. While on the topic of Freedom High School Fine Arts, the FHS Theater Company will open ticket sales to the public on March 1st, making it their first show in our auditorium open to a full audience in three years. You won't want to miss the musical performance of Curtains. That is all for the month of February here at Freedom High School. Thank you all for your time and have a wonderful night.
Thank you so much. Next up from Liberty High School, Ms. Sauter?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Roy and all members of the school board. February has been a very busy month for the students of Liberty High School. Liberty's MiniCon captains and members have been working extremely hard to prepare for the main event on Saturday, April 2nd, in Liberty's Memorial Gym. Main event registration will be taking place this week and next week, starting on Wednesday during all lunches. The week before Valentine's Day, MiniCon members donated candy and helped assemble canograms to sell at all lunches. Canograms are sold for a week and distributed on Monday, February 14th, during Fourth Block. The fundraiser was extremely successful with a grand total of almost $500. MiniCon is partnered with Chipotle on Airport Road to host the Dine and Donate tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thirty-two percent of all of them's sales go towards fighting pediatric cancer, so be sure to show the flyer for in-person and online orders. MiniCon will be partnering with Flyables on March 23rd from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. to host another Dine and Donate, so be sure to stay tuned for more updates on this event. Finally, MiniCon is hosting a Bingo and Basket Raffle event on Sunday, March 20th, starting at 1:00 p.m. in the cafeteria. Visitors can purchase 10 games of Bingo for $20, and they can purchase basket raffle tickets for 50 cents each. All proceeds from this event and other fundraisers go towards fighting pediatric cancer. Thank you in advance for your support. Congratulations to our very own Benjamin Pfeffer and Grace Deja for achieving first place at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science Regional Competition at North Hampton Area Community College. These students will move on to the state competition at Penn State Main Campus in May. Best of luck to our Liberty students. Liberty's Model UN will be competing at Lehigh University on Friday, March 18th, against other schools from the Lehigh Valley area. Best of luck to them. In sports, Liberty's boy swimming is still undefeated. Congrats to them, as well as some of our girls from our diving team who qualified for states. Our wrestling team's record is 11 to 10, although three wrestlers have made it to regionals. Congratulations to Christian Reed, Javon Delon, and Ryan Santiago. Lastly, the music department has had a very exciting month. Throughout this month, several members of the LHGB have been going above and beyond by working incredibly hard. Christian Norris, Jack Huey, David Broskowski, Anna Luzzeski, and Emma LaSalle participated in the District Band Festival. Congratulations to them. A special congratulations to Jack, Anna, and Emma, who qualified for region band. Jack Huey and Anna Luzzeski will also be representing Liberty at the 2022 PMEA All-State Band Concert in April. Good luck and congratulations to them. Ben Pfeffer, Christian Norris, and Anna Luzzeski also performed at the PMEA Northeast Region Orchestra Concert last Thursday. Congratulations to our amazing instrumentalists for being so dedicated and talented. The Sound of Music cast and crew, now under the direction of Mrs. Julie Wajinski, have been working extremely hard to put on our first musical back in the Liberty Auditorium. Our students have been rehearsing for countless hours a week, have continuously been putting their all into this show. Live theater is now back and better than ever, and we are so excited to share with you Liberty's production of The Sound of Music. That is all from Liberty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 24th, 2022 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Dr. Shively and Mrs. Schenkel, thank you. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a voice vote? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Now I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 14th, 2022 Board Finance Committee meeting and the February 14th, 2022 Board Human Resource Committee meeting.
So moved.
Dr. Donaher? Mr. Allozy, thank you. Any discussion or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, may I have a voice vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. I'd like to make a mo-- or would someone like to make a motion to approve the financial reports and payments of the bills? Thank you. Dr. White? Second, Dr. Shively. Any discussion regarding the records? Thank you. And Mrs. Gober, we have a roll call vote for the financial reports and payment of the bills. Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All motions passed, 7-0. Thank you. This evening, I'd like to report the board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel and legal. Next up, the superintendent's report. Dr. Roy, anything?
Just mentioned that, you know, we have on the agenda tonight the revised health and safety plan and not to be too presumptive, but presum-- assuming the board approves that those revisions, we move to optional masking. I just want to reiterate, and I'll do this in a message that will go out to the community as well, that it's optional masking. So there will be plenty of people who are ready to take the masks off and feel comfortable with that. We're fortunate, we're at a place where we're recommending that. And then there'll be plenty of people who still feel comfortable wearing the mask. And I think our community has done an incredible job of working our way through this entire pandemic respectfully. Not that we always, we've agreed on everything. But in this case now, I think it's really important that we focus on showing respect for each individual. So if someone has the mask on, we don't need to know why. You know, we don't need to ask why. That's their choice. If someone has their mask off, we don't need to say, hey, you're making me feel unsafe. It's respecting. We're at the point where people are going to make individual choices, and we need to respect those individual choices. So just a little reminder.
Thank you so much. Wonderful points. Next up, do we have any unfinished business for the board? Okay, seeing none. Okay, Dr. Beckpulley, as the facilities chair, would you like to make a motion to approve Facility Agenda Items 11.01 to 11.04?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Shively. Any discussion or changes to the Facility Agenda Items? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Gober, may we have a roll call vote, please, for Facility Items 11.01 to 11.04? Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All motions passed, 7-0. Thank you. Dr. Shively, as the curriculum chair, would you like to make a motion to approve Curriculum Agenda Items 12.01 through 12.02?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Mr. Allozy, thank you. Any discussion or changes regarding the curriculum agenda items?
Just seeing-- should that include 12.03?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a typo, 12.03. Thank you very much. Okay, so any discussion items on that? Okay, Mrs. Gober, could we have a roll call vote, please, for curriculum agenda items 12.01 through 12.03? Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All motions passed, 7-0. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the finance agenda items 13.01 through 13.18? Thank you, Mrs. Schenkel. Can I have a second? Dr. Donaher, thank you. Any discussion on these finance agenda items? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, can we have a roll call vote for finance items 13.01 through 13.18?
Mrs. Schenkel? Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All motions passed, 7-0. Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Agenda Items 14.01 through 14.06?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. White. May I have a second? Mrs. Schenkel, thank you. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, Mrs. Gober, may we have a roll call vote for Human Resources Items 14.01 to 14.06? Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Allozy?
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All motions passed, 7-0. Thank you. Next up for the reports of the committees, Dr. Donaher or Dr. Beckpulley for North Hampton Community College. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. The Board of Trustees of North Hampton Community College met on February 3rd in Alumni Hall. There was a short board meeting from 4:30 to 4:40, and then a retreat was held where we heard from Becky Bradley, the Executive Director of the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, on planning for the new normal and how the Lehigh Valley in total will be affected by some of the changes that she perceives coming in the not-too-distant future. And we also had an update on our campus master plan from Mark Kulp, who's now a consultant, having been the former Director of Facilities Management. I did want to bring to your attention a couple of points that were brought to our attention by Dr. Erickson, is that the enrollment front, as of January 2027, enrollment is down approximately 8% from the prior year. But we're hoping right around the corner, a revised target number. We are pushing for late-start classes at the community college. Matt Connell, the former Dean of the Monroe Campus, passed away after a bout with brain cancer. Our sympathies to Matt and his family. Sharon Beals, who is Vice President of Institutional Advancement, has been selected as a 2022 recipient of the Council for Advancement and Support of Education Common Fund College and University Foundations Award. It's a very prestigious award, and we congratulate Dr. Beals on her achievement. And that will be my report.
Thank you so much. Next up for Bethlehem-- Bethlehem Area Vote Tech, Dr. Schenkel, or Director Schenkel?
That's all right. I'll go.
I'm just all excited tonight.
Thanks. We met on February 1st at 7:00 p.m., and we probably the biggest agenda item of the evening was the preliminary budget presentation, which went well. Our enrollment down is down a little bit, so our budget impact is actually down a little bit, which is, you know, everything kind of explained in that presentation. But other than that, we did talk about some SFR grant replacement and some other, you know, capital projects with the roof restoration assessment and things like that. Next meeting is actually tomorrow, September 7th.
Thank you very much. Next up, Colonial IU Number 20, Dr. Shively?
The board met on February 23rd. I was not able to attend, but I did get the board report. At the meeting, the board approved commercial drivers license testing that they will, and this is to help deal with the school bus driver shortage. It allows the Colonial IU to become a third-party tester eligible to administer driving skills tests for the commercial licenses that are required for school bus drivers. They also approved an agreement with the state to, the Colonial IU will serve as a COVID-19 Prevention Outreach Testing Project Center for the remainder of this academic year into July of '22. So those are two things I know occurred during the meeting.
Thank you very much. Next up, the Task Force for Excellence Through Equity? No.
No report.
Thank you. There'll be no update for PSVA tonight, as Mr. Faschino is absent. The BASD Foundation, Dr. Roy, any update?
Nothing specific. The fundraising for the year is going well and the, which allows the foundation to then donate back to the district. We're aiming for close to $400,000 in donations this year that will then be given back to the district in the various grants that we receive. So things are going well through the pandemic for the foundation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, the Wellness Committee?
We were supposed to meet on February 17th, but that was actually canceled. So we are meeting on Wednesday, May 18th, is our next meeting.
Thank you. Any newer miscellaneous business for the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to courtesy of the floor at this time. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item may come down to the podium. We just ask that you please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Cameron Kauf, and I live at 1320 West Broad Street. Good evening. My name is Cameron Kauf, and I am a junior at Liberty High School. I have a medical mask exemption, and I wanted to share some of my experiences with you all. I had a teacher that, in the middle of the winter, would keep the window open as if she was scared to be around me. There are also teachers that yell across the hallways and overpasses for me to put on a mask instead of professionally approaching me. I also had a teacher tell me not to come near him because I didn't have a mask on. During this past winter cheer season, this was the first time I had thoughts not wanting to participate in this activity. These thoughts made me sad. It did not make any sense to me that I had to wear a mask during cheer around the vaccinated, but didn't have to wear one during the day. I had to be segregated because I'm unvaccinated and unmasked. Another confusing example is when another cheerleader, who is vaccinated, got COVID, but only the unvaccinated had to quarantine for 10 days, even though we weren't sick or had zero symptoms. By the way, the days I was forced to quarantine were the only days of school that I did miss. These examples that I had told you about made me feel sad, isolated, and segregated. I believe this was all unnecessary, and I did not appreciate the way I was treated. We were supposed to be BASD strong, but it didn't feel that way. May God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Faith Lichty, 1320 West Broad Street. I'm going to quote Mr. Roy from the last one, "We are smarter than that," and quote. BASD overall rank is 514 out of 707, which is the bottom 50%. By all means, don't say we are smarter. Instead of worrying about students' pronouns, the teachers should be worrying more about the children's educational basics. You know, math, spelling, social studies, you know, the basics. You have misplaced your priorities, and you're putting politics over the needs of our children. You push the vaccine and your clinics with your propaganda for these kids to get an experimental vaccine. 10 years from now, I hope you remember this moment, when the news stories come out that these children, as adults, start having medical problems, miscarriages, birth defects, or even death. Your poor decisions impacted the health of these innocent children. So yet again, I will say, I hope you all have a hard time sleeping at night. I want to end this with several thank yous. Thank you for teaching my child it's okay to separate and segregate. Thank you for teaching my child that it's okay to take an experimental vaccine. Thank you for teaching my child to distrust the police. Thank you for teaching my child to be scared of a virus that has a survival rate of 99.98. Thank you for teaching my child to be less white. And most of all, thank you for teaching my child her pronouns, which isn't she, her, or he, or him, or them, or it. It is free as hell. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Steve Ash, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. My first school board meeting, and I'm glad I came, and I just wanted to say thank you. Hello? Oh, yeah. Is this online? Because you know for privacy. Can I give my P.O. box? Is that okay? Yeah, P.O. box 4074, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Yeah, thanks a lot. A gentleman said it was okay for privacy since it's online. Thanks a lot. I just wanted to say thanks for, I hope, what appears to be a decision that makes the masking optional for the kids. I think they're probably all, maybe even watching this, you know, waiting for the decision to be made. I know probably a lot of debate went into it, pros and cons, and you know, I'm not a medical scientist, so I don't have all the answers, but as a parent, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, maybe some other parents as well. I'm sure the kids are looking forward to it. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else at this time for courtesy of the floor?
Hi, I'm Kylie Axelband. My address is 1813 Johnston Drive. I'm a sophomore at Freedom High School. And my concern is about COVID and the vaccine responses in my school. I want to know why the school is pushing this so-called vaccine with the "Finish the Bite" videos that are posted a lot. It does nothing but lower your own symptoms. You could still give it to other people. You could still get it. So I don't understand why it's being pushed so much when it's really, it does almost nothing. People from age 0 to 17 are the least likely to die from COVID. People are saying also that you should get it to protect your family, and once again, you could still give it to them, and it doesn't lower their symptoms as long as they're vaccinated too, I guess. If you truly follow the science, you would know that. And I'm just going to give a story about what happened to me and my experience. So I was close contact with somebody who contracted COVID, and I did not give away my vaccination status because I don't believe that they should know that. And I was forced to quarantine for five days, and I missed two days of school because of it. I have a 4.2 GPA, and I hate missing school because I want an education, and I want to go to college. The person that I was close contact with, she, she, um, sorry. She went to school before I was able to go to school, so she came back a day before I was even able to. And I don't understand how that is science-related at all because I was not the one who had COVID and did not contract it. I just don't see how there is science in there. And I also see, I have another example. One of my close friends on the first day of school was not wearing a mask, and this teacher was yelling through the halls to take off or put on his mask. And he clearly didn't hear him, and he was just walking. So the teacher came up, grabbed him by the arm, dragged him to the side, and yelled at him to put on his mask. That is assault, and that shouldn't be happening at my school, and that's very disappointing to see. And I just want to know, why is the vaccine being pushed so much on the students? And why aren't you pushing the flu shot like how you are with the COVID shot? I ask that you take a good look at the science for every student in the school district and not for your political reasons. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay.
Good evening. My name is David Emmadon. I live in West Bethlehem. This is my moment for five or 10 minutes of education. I want to give you an update on my progress, helping, what I think is helping you, creating a draft video in response to the systemic racism video. It's being reviewed by friends I trust. And I will soon be able to send it to you. I'll also make it available on YouTube. And I will use it as the basis for commuting, for communicating with groups in Bethlehem. Because I Because I am sensing that's some progress like that will be necessary to help the school board focus on this issue. So today, I want, so in the video, I'll be demonstrating that none of the tenants of systemic racism actually bear much scrutiny. The, the idea that, you know what, I don't want to redo the video. For now, I want to take it as, as read, that there are some problems with it that make it false. And I want to talk about an assertion I've made many times, that it is harmful. Because one thing I get when I talk to other responsible people, engage them in a conversation, is, well, why do you care? Why do you do this? Isn't it still good to fight racism, even if that's not the main thing? Well, here's why it's harmful. The most important determinant for student success is not the funding at the school district. It's not how much money their grandparents made. It's not the attitude of other white students toward them. It is how much they choose to invest in themselves by choosing to do their homework, to be on time, to stay out of trouble. These are things that parents teach children, and I do not think that this comes from being black and brown. Don't confuse me. It's not about skin color. It's primarily about family income and family structure, most of all. But the system is not biased against them. When they apply to college, it's going to be a distinct advantage to have a black skin when they apply to a job. The issue is, we right here in K-12 are having trouble equipping some of our students to be ready for those successes. And the difference is, and studies have shown this, on how much the stu- the money that their grandparents earned. You are, you are weakening the connection for those students between them invested, that would help them choose to do their homework instead of something else. And what we should tell them in themselves, and teaching them that the system itself is not fair is, is the wrong direction to go for that, as is teaching them that skin color is the most important thing, but I think I've used my five minutes. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to open forum. Any items from the board? Dr. Beckley?
Just two quick things. First off, just wanted to congratulate all of the middle schoolers that were involved in amazing, just incredible, the sheer number of students that were up on the stage over the weekend. So just congratulations to all of them, and it was another coming up on March fifteenth, there is going to be a vigil in Allentown at City Hall. More details will be forthcoming, but at four o'clock that Tuesday, there'll be a vigil at City Hall to focus attention on fair funding for public schools, fair and adequate funding. And so, like I said, I will keep you posted on the details of that, but just to flag that date.
Thank you so much. Real quick, Dr. Mr. Allozy, I just wanted to kind of reiterate as well that tonight, the board did approve the BASD Health and Safety Plan, which, effective immediately, we are moving our tier into optional masking. So I know that there was some wasn't sure if that was clearly addressed this evening, but effective immediately, as Dr. Roy had said, students have an option to continue to wear it. They have an option to not wear it. And we hope that our, our staff and our students will be respectful of one another in the decisions that they make. So if you'd like to remove yours, you may at this time. And I'd also like to acknowledge the administration, the city of Bethlehem, St. Luke's, our health partner. This has been a tremendously hard two years for all involved, regardless of what your opinions are. And I appreciate your efforts and doing what you felt was best for our students and our staff and our district as a whole. I'm happy, however, that we're moving on to a next level, and hopefully we can continue and keep everyone safe and sound. So. Mr. Allozy?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the students that came down today. Thank you for taking the time and exercising your courage and, and showing the love and support from your homes to come and speak in a forum like this that may not always be easy, that may sometimes cause feelings of nervousness or whatever, but the fortitude that you all showed today to speak today is always appreciated. So to you and your parents, thank you for instilling those virtues within yourself and to the parents within your children. We do appreciate you speaking, speaking your mind and sharing your concerns. To the young people that ask questions, you are welcome to see myself or anyone, if you have any questions, we can with the questions that were raised tonight at the podium, to kind of clear up anything that you may have had questions with, if you'd like, with your parents. But thank you again for your time and your words. It is very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Allozy. Anyone else for open forum this evening? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? I'll take that as a motion, Mr. Allozy, and second, Dr. Shively. Thank you so much, everyone.